Seven o'clock, we're going to call the meeting to order. You all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is applied by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unarrogant, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with the agenda this evening, I'm going to suggest that we have a motion, a moment of silence for a friend of mine and one of the real good guys here in Middleborough, Jim Bragel, who has passed away this weekend in a automobile accident on Route 44. Not only was he my friend and a good guy, but he was also a mentor to a lot of our children here at the high school. He was a teacher at the high school, taught the business classes, headed up the DECA program, and was varsity soccer coach. So, he's going to be missed. I'll certainly be missing him. So, if we could, a moment of silence for Jim Bragel. Thank you. Unanticipated. Any board member have anything under unanticipated? Anyone from the GNE Commission have anything under unanticipated?
I am Mike Solomini, a resident, speaking as a resident.
Hi, Mike, how are you? Welcome.
Okay, thank you. First of all, Al, Mr. Rule, Selectman Rule, I definitely wanted to thank you for your time serving as a selectman, as well as Mr. Spataro. Sorry, I haven't attended as many meetings, and maybe that's a good thing.
We are, too.
But, really, I do understand the time you've -- the time commitment, the work you put in, even when we don't agree on different things. It's definitely easier to throw stones than to catch them. So, I appreciate all the time. I hope to see, you know, you around and you stay involved as much as you can, but I really do just want to say a thanks for the work you've done, the responses you've given me, the involvement you've had. It is really appreciated from me. I do appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate the comments. He's just buttering me up now.
For what?
No.
For part two. Here it comes.
Here is part two. But, you know, I was sincere in that. On the other side...
And the other thing, just as a part of all...
Al, I won't thank you for your time, all right? On the other side of it, I've been a little bit involved in another committee's commission charter, the committee, Gas and Electric Commission. So, I understand the work you put in. And that, but on the other side that I wanted to share with you, some of my experience in open meeting law and postings for executive session. I looked at today's agenda, and on the agenda, it listed contract negotiations, non-union personnel. I've had some, we've had some meetings. I've had some experience with contract negotiation, open meeting law, and I've read some open meeting law cases. I'd like to give you Stoughton's open meeting law case and just throw a little bit of caution out there that the amount of detail in your agenda posting, I think, could be a little more. I brought this up in past agendas where it's like I look at the agenda and say, who is this, who are you having a discussion with? Who's contract are you negotiating? I've actually called you, and you've given me the answer, and I've been happy with that. But as far as going forward, I think all our committees and commissions need to realize there are like only 10 reasons for executive session, maybe three or four that only apply to the commission. In contract negotiations, when you know the position of the person, and that's what happened in the Stoughton case, should have been listed.
You're right. I, um...
So, that's all I wanted to say.
I called on this one once before, just so that everyone knows, if you're not going to stick around for the whole meeting tonight, it's our secretary position that we'll be discussing tonight in executive session.
That's only one part of the requirement. The notice, there's a notice requirement and a verbal notification that you just did. In the Stoughton case, there was not enough specific information in the notice of the agenda, and there wasn't enough notice in the verbal description by the chair. And it's page five, six, and eight, conclusion on page eight. I'd like to just give you this document to you guys.
Okay.
And again, it's just from my experience, trying to follow the somewhat new open meeting law. And that's the case I read, came to mind when I read this. That's why I called you the last time, because we didn't post it one time before. You gave me an excellent description of what it was. I knew. The agenda is to let everyone know, not just me.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right. Announcements and recognition, board members? Anyone in the audience? Jade, come on down.
Jane Lopes, speaking for the Rotary Club.
Uh huh.
Under announcements, this weekend is the Rotary Auction. It's live on cable TV on Channel 9, Comcast, and Channel 34, Verizon, from 4:00 to 7:00 on Saturday and 1:00 to 5:00 on Sunday. Lots of great things to buy, all for a good cause. We give $12,000 in scholarships every year and do some other charitable things. So, the auction is our major fundraiser of the year. So, if you buy something at the auction, you're helping us give a scholarship to local students or do some other wonderful thing.
Thank you. And there's a preview, right, from 12:00 to 3:00?
Yes, there's a preview at Middleborough High School in the gym from 1:00 to 3:00, uh, 12:00 to 3:00.
Okay. Thank you.
And there's also a kid care ID program. You can have your child's, have a video done of your child and get their fingerprints done from the police department from 10:00 to 3:00.
10:00 to 3:00?
Yeah, also in the gym.
All right, great. That's good. Thank you.
Ms. Lopes, is the, are the auction items going to be listed in the Gazette?
Yes.
And the approximate time that they're going to be going up for bid?
Yep, this week.
Is that fishing trip still there?
There it is.
Miss Balden beefed the last time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is approval of the regular and executive session minutes for March 4th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's the regular minutes, regular meeting minutes, motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Yes.
Second, any discussion, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Ayes have it, unanimous. The executive session minutes for March 4th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it, unanimous. Under new business, vote to approve the filing of a zoning enforcement complaint by the building commissioner for a 191 Bedford Street. Could you...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a, actually, this is a WRPD violation that the conservation agent identified in a inspection that she had of the property. Basically, there's a wall that was built within the 25-foot no-touch zone. So, once we learned of it, we, Mr. Whalen, put the property owner on notice that the wall hadn't been removed, and no action has been taken. So, the only thing now left to do is to pursue the enforcement through a, you know, a complaint.
Does everyone in the audience want to speak to this matter? Board have any questions or comments?
This buffer is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Alan.
This has been going on for a while.
It's been going on a couple of years. You know, we've sent, we've sent numerous letters to the property owner to correct the problem. He hasn't responded, so now, you know, we've got no other recourse.
I remember reading about this when I was on the Conservation Commission prior to my joining the board. So, it's, I mean, it's got to be two and a half, three years.
Given this guy lots of opportunity to fix the problem?
We have.
And Mr. Clough?
No, I contest what I was getting at.
Yeah, no, this, this has been a longstanding issue that we have, you know, tried other avenues to resolve, and then we're not getting any more, unfortunately.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Ayes have it, unanimous. Next item is vote to approve use of town roads for the seventh annual Patriot Half Triathlon on June 15th. This is the seventh time they've run this. Some of the Middleborough roads will be utilized. You have two, two letters from our safety, uh, department heads, one from Chief Benjamino, indicating he has no issue with this as long as they keep access available to emergency vehicles. And the police chief has no issues either, again, as long as they maintain the proper parameters for safety regarding this. What's, any, any board member have any questions?
No volunteer from the board on this one?
Not...
Alan?
Not this year.
Okay.
I'll tell you what, though, this is one, one great race. If they do a bang-up job, then, they really do. It's a premier race in this area.
What's the pleasure, anyone in the audience want to comment on this? Okay, then, what's the pleasure of the board?
Hold it.
Oh, we have one.
Hi, how are you? Lud Montapurt, Marion Road, just a question. I know there are other triathlons. I know there's bike races that go along Middleborough. Is there a thought about having a cleanup afterwards? I see on some of the bike races that go on, afterwards, there are cups and cans and honeydew coffee tossed throughout all the properties. I don't know if there's an added fee for cleanup afterwards, or if you ask them to place garbage cans along the route for such things. Just an observation.
No, I, since I've been on the board, that question's never been asked. It's a good question. I don't, I don't know. I don't know if we've ever asked the sponsors of this event to pick up after themselves and that. What's the deal?
We haven't, we should.
Yeah. Why don't we, thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you.
We'll be addressing the motion.
It doesn't even require, you know, bag, I mean, bags would do, you know?
Right.
Something that just places in, urging people to, you know, properly dispose of any, you know?
I think that's a good idea.
You know, in the past, if we could, Mr. Chairman, the only way to seem to get these things going is you, almost like a, what word I'm looking for, maybe?
A cleanup detail, or?
Well, they just have, maybe just to pay into something, you know, you get it back when it's clean, withhold, I don't know, just...
I think that's a great idea.
Well, we can try, we can try just asking people to be more vigilant about it and asking the cleanup after themselves, not to, you know?
You could include in the motion, too, in the approval that they...
Sure.
Who made that motion? Have we, do we have a motion before you have a question?
I don't think we have a motion.
No.
We do not?
No.
Good.
Make a motion to, uh...
What's the pleasure of the board then?
Approve this request with the caveat that they have a cleanup afterwards to make sure that they pick up any of the refuse that's left behind.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Frum?
Just want to be clear, we're not picking on this race in particular. It's just kind of, we're just going to kind of set a precedent here. Because, like I said, I do know that this company, the company that runs this rate, race is an extremely professional outfit, and they, I don't know if they're the ones who will leave any trash behind, but we might as well ask everybody.
Might as well. It's a good idea. I haven't heard any complaints after these events, or I think they, they tend to do that now, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McKinnon?
I think we could probably just let anybody who approaches the board know in the future that part of the authorization to allow them to do this comes with the caveat that they're going to clean up after themselves.
I guess so.
And then if they don't, we'll know, because we have people out there with eagle eyes, and they'll let us know, and then we can take the necessary appropriate steps in the future.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Ayes have it, unanimous. The next item is vote to approve and authorize chairman or his designate to sign weekly warrants. This was a comment that came out of our management letter audit for last year. The auditors review our internal control procedures, and apparently, this is one area that all towns have been receiving comments. Currently, one member of the board is assigned to go over and sign the weekly warrants for expenditures for the town. Apparently, state statute requires a majority of the selectmen sign the warrant. We've spoken to our auditors, and they're very comfortable with having a vote every week, authorizing the chairman to sign, the chairman of the designate to sign the warrant. So, it's a new procedure. We're going to adopt that with, with this vote tonight, if it passes. Any comments from the board?
We can't just, we have to do this every week?
We're going to do this, apparently, every week was a suggestion of the auditors, yes. At least they didn't make three of us sign it.
Well, that's true. Suppose we can be happy for them.
Should we, should we put that vote, like, in between announcements and minutes, if we have to do it every week?
Yeah, I think we ought to do it right after minutes. I thought it's got to be under the category. I guess it can be under the first item under new business, and we'll just give it down.
A lot of stupid stuff.
I wouldn't call new business stupid, by the way.
No, I'm not saying new business is...
It tends to be routine, if that's what you mean.
Making the same motion every week.
Okay.
This is really, they're generating right out of control again, I can see.
Anyone in the audience have any comments on this? What's the...
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Ayes have it, unanimous. Next item for the board is to vote to hold the special town meeting, an annual town meeting, on April 22nd, 2013.
And what time are we going to hold that, Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me?
What times? Didn't we have to specify times?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM for the...
Special.
Special.
Special and 7:10 for the...
30 for the annual.
Whatever, immediately following the special, we'll be the annual.
Well, 7:05?
No.
No, 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 no. Last time we did that, we got...
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
We got in there too early.
Yeah, I think we...
We can start, we could...
7:05.
I would say 7:00 and 7:05.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Ayes have it. Well, this will be the first time in a long time that we have an April town meeting, of course, without charter. This is a, this is a good thing. Moving on to...
Actually, we just wanted you to have another town meeting.
Apparently. And, and I enjoy it, so it'll be fun. We're down to hearings, meetings, and licenses. The first item was supposed, I guess we have to wait till 7:30 for this one? Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I can, let me do the town manager's report.
Yeah, why don't we do the town manager? Good idea.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the, um, the first item is a communication we received last week from MEMA on the damage assessment for the Blizzard, not, not this past weekend, but the first Blizzard. And just wanted to see, you know, despite our best efforts, and Chief Benjamino, again, is coordinating the town's response to try and get reimbursement for that storm, there are a number of different hoops that will have to be jumped through, including that storm-related costs will have to be included in the emergency declaration, which is, you know, I guess, as of yet, has not been, been done. So, so we may not get reimbursement for the storm-related costs unless they, they apply for it. So, so I just wanted to make you aware that, that, you know, we are, we are trying, but, you know, it, there's a, you know, some federal action that has to take place for that to even happen.
Was Plymouth County one of the...
Yeah, I mean, certainly, the, as this memo talks about, I mean, certainly, the impacts were there, the damage was there, but, but snow is not a normal part of a, you know, reimbursement program, and it has to be specifically mentioned in the declaration, so...
And we didn't do that.
They, I guess it's still being worked on, from what I can, I can see. It's not that it has, it hasn't yet been, it may be, I think they're trying to assess just the magnitude of the damage to decide whether they will, so...
Is, is this for the town of Middleborough, or the state hasn't?
The whole, yeah, this is actually...
The whole state hasn't put that together yet?
Well, actually, it's even, it's a federal...
Oh.
Yeah, it's a federal decision.
But it does go by county, though.
Yeah, the costs have to be assessed by county, and I, and I think the, you know, the memo shows that perhaps all 14 counties may exceed the applicable, you know, population-based cost. But again, it has to specifically mention that, that snow assistance is, is part of the reimbursement. So...
Okay.
And then, we have a, I just want to, I put this in, there's a bill that we sent to the North Carver Water District. I just put that in as a reminder for me to, to mention that this was related to a problem they were having within their water system. As you know, Carver took over their water system a couple of years ago, and we have a tie-in with them and an intermunicipal agreement with them to assist them on, on some things that they, you know, they, they may not be able to do on their own. We have, certainly, a more experienced staff, and, you know, in certain circumstances, they may need water from us, and in this case, they did. And we supplied them with about 300,000 gallons of water for a problem they had. And when I was talking to the town administrator, Rick LaFawn, last week, you know, he just, he went out of his way to thank the town of Middleborough for all the assistance that they have given over the years, and specifically since the, the start of their new water system and service, and, and the backup we provided them. So, I just wanted to mention to you that our neighbors in Carver expressed their appreciation to Middleborough for our, you know, our help with their water system.
That's great.
Yeah. Certainly, always nice to hear.
It's nice to be able to help neighbors, isn't it?
And then, the final thing was, and Mr. Baggs stepped out of the room, but, you know, we did get his letter alerting us to his retirement, and I've given you the, the posting that we're about to publish tomorrow. It's the same posting we used almost four years ago, and since we had redone it, I mean, we created the title then and a new job description then. I don't, I don't foresee needing to update that. It's, it's only a few years old. So, you know, I just wanted to let you know that we're, we're starting that process tomorrow.
Do you need our approval for this?
No, no, I just wanted to bring it to your attention and to...
Any selectman have any comments on the letter? Okay.
And then, a couple of signed approvals that were done recently. And that's all I have.
Okay. Still not quite 7:30. We'll move on.
Oh, I do have one more thing, and we'll talk about it more tomorrow, I'm sorry, next week, when we talk about the article. But we did receive four proposals from design firms to do our wastewater treatment plant upgrade, and they're four very, you know, well-known and reputable firms, so we'll be doing some interviews next week to, the next part of the process is to present you with a rank order of three finalists, from which we can then go down to, you know, try and negotiate a contract with the first the highest, and the next highest, and then the third highest, if the first two are not successful. And we'll be having our consultants from Environmental Partners, some of the staff, and I've asked Mr. Rules to sit in on the interviews as well, so that we have a number of people, you know, in on the, the ranking. So, that'll take place next week.
Will the interviews be open?
No.
No.
But if, if you have some time, if you want to, we're doing them in the middle of the day, that's the only problem.
Okay.
Brian?
My name's Brian Gemronia, with the Middleborough Friends, and one of the items that was approved this week on the town manager's list of town hall usage is the eighth annual summer contest series will be kicking off again this year. We haven't decided if we're going to have a July 4th kickoff, because so many things are going on on July 4th, but we'll be doing Thursdays this summer again. It's free to the public right here in the town hall green, so I want to thank you guys for letting us use the facilities again. But it is the eighth annual, it's crazy. I think there's eight years this has been going on, but it's been a great eight years, and time has flown by. But I just want to make mention that it will be coming up again. I don't get crazy days coming up in August, so there's a lot of fun things going to happen this summer in Middleborough. Thank you.
Thank you. Not quite 7:30. Why don't we, your correspondents, we'll start with Mr. McKinnon this evening.
Well...
Can you ask Steve?
Yeah, contemplating. Taking my time, we get time. I'll be going to the Plymouth County Commission meeting coming up. That was our big letter from them. And I'll let you know what the results of that are. That'll be in, whatever it is, eh? March 28th. So, we will, I'll bring back a report from them when we finish that. I'm just trying to stretch this out, because not a lot of correspondence here.
No, we're getting close. We're doing a fine job here. Anything else?
You know, we, I, we mentioned, I think it was last week, the Auburn Street situation. Were you able to get any kind of an update on that?
No, I will for next week. Sorry. Because, yeah, it's a, that deadline is coming up, and I...
It's right in, right around the three-month window, and just wanted to see if maybe we can get some kind of a report on that.
Thank you, Steve. You're doing a great job on this.
I am trying. I'm trying.
Mr. Clough?
Well, number seven, I think it's probably better that we just hold off till probably after, you know, to next week or something, because I know we talked about the letter and our response.
If you want, go ahead, if you don't, I will.
Well, you go ahead. I mean, I, I just, I just think, as we know, it's not, I think it was probably going to be an agenda item or something, because we had postponed it to have, you know, look at the language on it, so one of, I know, I just wanted to carry it into that, that week. Okay. Go ahead.
Alan?
Sure. I guess we're all on the same page, oddly enough, because I was going to bring up five, six, and seven.
Go ahead, Anne.
There it is now. Do we have, do we hold a position on the advisory board for the MBTA?
Yes, you're looking at.
How's it going?
The story hasn't changed. The story has not changed for the four years that I've been the representative there. They continue to run deficits. They, in recent years, they try to make it up with fare increases and, and service cuts. They've dipped into the gasoline tax to try to fund the operating budget, but the solutions they've come up with are only solving that year's problem. There has never been a long-term solution proposed for the MBTA. And the problem is, they're trying to fund expansion while trying to continue to do the maintenance required on their existing struck infrastructure. They can't, they can't manage both.
Yeah, true, yeah.
And most of the members of that board are from inner cities that really depend on public transportation. I'm there because we do have the stop here for rapid transit, but clearly, the weight of this, this advisory board is all focused in on the needs of the larger cities. They want expanded service, they want improved maintenance, and they're not interested in expanding the system either, so...
No, it just seems like Mr. Reagan, the executive director, he seems a bit upset, and I can completely understand why, but calling the state reference, state senator, and urging them to support a real and permanent solution to a transportation funding problem generally, and the MBTA in particular. generally, and the MBTA in particular, so I was just, I was just wondering who our representative was on that board. Glad you're taking care of it. And then, I'm going to try to make it to the Plymouth County Advisory Board meeting as well, just to see what the hell they're doing.
Fine, don't let us know, will you?
Yeah, well, I mean, I sit next, actually, maybe I should sit across the room from Mr. McKinnon, so they don't realize that we're together.
That's right, we can double team them.
But, um...
They can't throw us out of the county.
It's up to you, whatever you want to do.
I just thought it was very interesting that we got this, this notice from the Massachusetts Municipal Association regarding Speaker DeLeo's finance legislation, I don't always agree with them, but I do this time, you know, and I hope that we all read this and keep, keep what they say in mind for our discussion next week about the letter that we'll hopefully be sending out, because it certainly seems to make some sense to me.
General? Just to expand on that, the letter from MMA was in support of finding a dedicated revenue stream to support the need for badly damaged infrastructure, he specifically mentioned roads and bridges, but they left it open to support all transportation needs, and my guess is that it will again be a part of the MBTA solution, as a guess on my part, I don't know that for sure, but they want a revenue stream to support all infrastructure needs, and they're primarily saying that the funding for Chapter 90 needs to be increased, that it is not adequate for the local communities to do the local road maintenance that they need to do, all that money, you know, comes from Chapter 90, it doesn't come from any other source, so if they increase that Chapter 90 funding, we'll be able to do expanded projects on our local road needs here as well, so...
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Frawley.
Just as a point of reference, I don't think there are too many towns in the Commonwealth who have as many miles of roads as Middleborough.
I don't think there is either.
My question was, you mentioned five, six, and seven, the discussion we just had here about the Chapter 90 money, was that just five, was that six, was that seven, there was no...
Number seven.
So that was seven, could you just kind of list what the correspondence, five, six, and seven mean?
You didn't go through online and check out all this out?
It's not there.
You didn't print it up?
I didn't find it.
It's not on the agenda, but it...
It's under correspondence, I didn't find it, and I don't get those correspondence. Thank you.
Number five was a letter from the MBTA Advisory Board regarding their board meeting on the, on March, on April 4th, or April 3rd, I'm sorry, number six was the Plymouth County Advisory Board, which is regarding a board meeting on March 28th, and number seven was the Mass Municipal Association regarding transportation finance legislation.
Okay, Mr. Quell?
Just one question to Charlie prior to, as it relates to the letter, you don't need to go into any detail on this, but do you plan on having discussions with all of our state reps prior to a final draft?
I can certainly circulate it if you, if you like.
Well, I mean, I'm speaking to as many, you know, and they're calling me back, and they seem to be telling, at some points, radically different stories about, or points of view on, on this thing, so, I just thought...
Sure, I would be happy to send it out, send out a draft, let them know what's going to be discussed, and, you know, but again, it's, you know, not all that different from...
Isn't it a letter to our reps?
Right.
Are you going to ask our reps what kind of letter?
Well, this is how they're taking it, how, what their, what their take is on it, because, and like I say, I talked to one, and then I talked to another, and, you know...
Sign, no sign. We're happy to consult everybody.
They're welcome to come to our meeting and speak on a matter if they like.
I'd like.
I don't, I mean, but this is a letter from this board to them, if it passes, asking for their support, it's not like...
No, I understand that, but I think that, you know, having discussion, I mean, you already had a discussion with one, you know, and I think, you know, he made some good points, so...
That's fine.
No, we will definitely circulate it for their...
To let them know it's even coming out, okay.
Definitely.
All right, it is now beyond seven thirty, so we did a good job stalling, well, not stalling, but taking care of other matters on this evening's meeting, so we'll now move down to hearings, meetings, and licenses, and the first item was a hearing regarding the application for a license for Edgeway Mobile Home Park, and we have a recommendation here to continue to March 25th, my understanding is the continuation is so that we would allow the current receiver appointed by the court, Mr. Burke, to continue negotiations with a buyer, apparently, the last discussion we had scared off a couple of buyers regarding the license, and so he has asked that we continue this to March 25th in order for him to proceed further down the road with those negotiations.
Correct, I talked to Attorney Burke last week, he tells me he has a different buyer who is interested, and I've heard from various staff members, department heads, who were contacted and visited by this individual, and he has come in and is doing his due diligence, and I am told that we may hear something about this as early as this week, so he asked if we could, you know, delay action to give him some time to see if he can consummate this transaction, so I thought it would be a good idea to give him, you know, the time to see if we can get somebody in here who will actually get some work done in the park.
Okay, any board members have any comments on this, before I open up to the audience for comment? Any comments in the room?
What has not already been said.
Huh? Well, not exactly, I am, well, then I'll speak to him, I am in favor of this continuance, it's probably not a surprise to anyone in this room, I think the solution lies in selling this park, and I think we should allow this negotiation to continue, and at least, this one seems to be fairly serious, he's contacted various department heads here in town, and I think it would be appropriate to continue until March 25th, and see if we can get this park sold, that's my comment. Anyone in the audience like to comment on this? No?
No?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Wow.
I knew you couldn't resist.
I knew you couldn't resist.
Come on, I gave you an offer to come to the podium, you wouldn't come?
Like a politician with a microphone.
Go ahead, please introduce yourself.
And again, Edgeway, and of course, you know how we feel about the license, we feel that they, with all those violations, usually when you give a license, though, everything has to be up to code, we've been this route before, you don't want to go through it again, you give them the license, and then they drag your feet, and then you're going to look at us every week, just a reminder, that's how we feel.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment? What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to post, to continue this hearing to 3:25 at 7:30?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Frawley?
Is this the second continuance?
This is the second continuance, yes it is.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to stir things up, but I'm just wondering, how long, how long are we going to go? Because it's March 25th now, and that's three months that they're operating without a license, just to keep it in mind.
I appreciate that, and I think if they're not ready to go on the 25th, it'll probably be a different discussion, but hopefully, we'll be ready to hear something positive by the 25th. Any other comments, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, ayes have it, it's unanimous. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to review annual town meeting draft articles, we'll be reviewing four of the articles this evening, we have the moderator with us, welcome, Mr. Perkins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And it is, still above freezing out there, and not snowing.
It's a good day.
It is a good thing, but thank you for voting for the, remind everybody, the 22nd of April, 7 o'clock, town, the high school, we will be having a annual town meeting, so please do what you've been doing, and come on out. We have an article this year, I'm going to read what the article states, and then try to give you a little short brief on the background of it, but to see if the town will vote to adopt the following bylaw, when a two-thirds vote of the town meeting is required by statute for passage of a motion, the moderator may declare that the motion passed by two-thirds vote under a voice vote, and in such case, a counted vote need not be taken unless a standing vote, vote by ballot, or other counted vote is required by statute, and there are a couple of places where a counted vote is required, one is the passage of a bylaw requires an actual counted vote, another one, because of bond counsel, if we're approving bonding articles, we need a counted vote, but there are many of them that come up where there are one or two dissenters in the, in the town meeting, and in those particular cases, we've been having to have everyone stand, and it takes time, the only reason for putting this article on is to try to save town, time at town meeting, and make it move along more smoothly. At the end of 1996, Governor Wells signed a new act, Chapter 448 of the Acts of 96, which affects town meetings, according to this legislation, in matters requiring a two-thirds vote, the vote no longer needs to be counted, the effect of this change would be to expedite the proceedings, in other words, move things along, now, the law also states, as it always has, that seven or more voters can call for a counted vote, that doesn't change if we adopt this, if there's, if the moderator decides that by voice vote it passed, and seven voters in attendance stand up and want a counted vote, we'll have a counted vote, the new legislation also specifies that towns may implement this change by either a bylaw or a vote of town meeting, so I'm recommending that, that we pass this, and that's, that's the background on it, with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Anyone?
You know that the first time you do this, some, seven people are going to get up and...
That's perfectly okay, too, you know, that's fine, I mean, I think we're fortunate in New England to still be operating under town meeting form of government, the town meeting actually is the town legislature, you folks are the executive branch, and town meeting is the legislature, and they, every voter in town has a right to be heard, and if they don't feel that a vote was called properly by the moderator, the law's very specific in giving them an opportunity to ask for counted vote, so...
Any other women have any comment?
I, I personally am in favor of this article, I think it will both expedite the meetings, I've attended a lot of them, and there are times where it just, you see people absolutely disgusted with the fact that you call it poison, there may be one in opposition, and then they all have to, they all have to stop, stand up, take account, go on to the next one, and there's always somebody who wants to say, no, that's just the nature of the beast of town meeting, and it does kill time, and if it happens at the end of the meeting, people start bailing out, they don't want to, they don't want to put up with it, so I think this is a good idea.
I think it is, too.
Someone, Mike, you have a comment?
Yeah, in this bylaw, it will require for the moderator to state that seven persons can stand to challenge this, I don't think a lot of people would realize, you know, how the town meetings work, sometimes they don't, sometimes they do, but that gives a lot of power to the moderator, saying, yeah, it was a yea and nay vote, just by him making the decision, if in the bylaw it was worded that, and repeated by the moderator that this is going to be a two, you know, two-thirds by voice vote, however, if anyone feels that they want to count, this is how you do it, mention that in the bylaw, and require the moderator to state that at the town meeting, because otherwise, people say, yeah, this passes, this passes, we'll move the meeting along quickly, but people in the, the voters may not realize, they have, they can challenge, they can ask for a challenge if they think it's close, some know that already, some don't, and I think it'd be better if the moderator state that there is a way of, you know, challenging his decisions so that the burden of the decision doesn't someday, oh, some, well, moderator just said it was this way, and we really felt it wasn't, it takes the burden off of him as well, or her, so, I don't know if that can be written in the bylaw, but that'd be a concern I would have, you're giving a yea and nay decision to a moderator, I don't know if we can add that wording, that they, kind of, hey, here's how you challenge if you want to count.
So this is just kind of emphasizing what's already provided by state statute?
Yeah, but stated by the moderator, it's a state statute, but he doesn't have to say that, hey, here's how you challenge, make it a part of the bylaws, so people know, if they don't agree with the moderator's decision, you know, seven, seven voters stand up and say they want to count, stated, you know, we just hit here, if the moderator would do that in the foot of the bylaw, to require it, it takes, puts the decision back in the voters' hands, not in the moderator's, that's what I would ask about.
Those of us who are familiar with it know it's there anyway, it's there, but I get your point, they need a, a lot of people attend, that's the...
150, you know it's there.
Can I offer a parliamentary counter to that?
Go ahead, Adam.
Anybody at a town meeting has the right to rise to a point of order, and it's the, it's mandatory that the moderator listen to a point of order, and if the point of order stated is they'd like a counted vote, at that point in time, it's the responsibility of the moderator to state, if there are seven people present which would stand and want a counted vote, we'll do a counted vote, so I'm not sure that it needs, the language needs to be in the bylaw, and quite frankly, what you're doing when you adopt this bylaw is adopting a piece of legislation that doesn't include that, so...
Mr. Frawley?
I certainly agree with Mr. Salamini's sentiment, but one thing that I personally experienced at town meeting is when I was getting my feet wet, causing trouble at town meeting, even the people who disagreed with me, or with whatever I was trying to pass at that point, helped me understand how to, how to go about what I was doing, but the former town moderator told me flat out that he was not going to recognize a motion to rescind that I was going to make, and then he told me how to do it. So, I've always, I've always personally had great experience with the moderators, I've also had great experience, like I said, even with the people who, who didn't agree with my position at the time, made sure that I had the proper procedure and the proper form to get done whatever I wanted to get done, and like I said, even if they were in complete disagreement with me, so I, I certainly have faith in my town moderator, and my future town moderators, and the, and the good people in Middleborough, to make sure the town meeting goes the way it's supposed to go.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McKinnon?
Having been through several different moderators, both in this town and in another town, moderators are very conscientious people, they take the job very seriously, and they don't, none of the moderators that I've lived through have ever tried to ramrod anything through, and there's always been the concern, and I've seen Mr. Perkins do this, when he had doubts, he would call, he'd call for his own voice, standing role, and, and this is not to eliminate the ability of anybody in one of those close votes, this is one of those situations where it's, you get all in favor, you get a roar, all against, you get one, and that's what this is for, this is not for the, well, we're going to sell the water division, and it takes a two-thirds vote, and, okay, yeah, get rid of them.
I just want to clarify, I wasn't saying that.
Well...
I just, hey, you know, I know that, I fully agree with everything he's saying here, but there are people who don't know the point of order, or seven can challenge it, and they're just saying, that's why I brought it up.
No, there are people...
And I do agree with everything he's saying, and it's not to say that he's going to just move quickly through something.
No.
If there's something that is close, I have seen the moderator many times, I want to call the town, and I'm glad that happens.
Right.
Will he always be our moderator? No?
He might be, you never know.
Yeah, well, yeah. But there's also a perception that people in the audience might have thought it was close, and that, you know, stating your, your procedure would help them move that.
And Mike, there are people in the audience that are very much like you that would, that would say, you know, I think that that was kind of close, can we, can we do something here, can we check, they may not know the verbiage, they may not know the terminology, but they're going to say, hey, what, that was close, can we do something here, and then the moderator can run with that, and he will.
I agree with you, but there are more people who don't know, and don't speak up, and don't take their right, and take advantage of their...
But that's why we have you, Mike.
I can't always be there.
But Wayne will always be there.
Yeah, Brian will always be there.
But I just wanted to clarify that I'm not saying if it's, if we're close, I know that would happen, Steve, Mr. McKinnon, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I know that would happen, and I agree with what you're saying, all the moderators, you know, take it very seriously, and if it's close, call for a count, but I just want, you know, I just like to know if people have choices, if people have power, to say, please tell me I don't agree with that, and what it is, and what the path is to do that, I think Wayne will probably say that at the beginning, he'll say, here's what you're doing, he always has, and that's the choice, or the option, I don't want this to take away, that's all I'm saying, if we're able to make the meetings go faster and agree, at some point in time, it will get lost, and we won't know that we have this power, this option at town meeting, that's why I got involved in the town charter, is to understand the town form of government, just don't want this change, this bylaw, to take away the voice of the people, that's all, and I'm not saying that our moderators aren't good, and our moderators aren't clear, they're not, they're in the eye.
Way to go.
But that's the only reason I'm trying to make, make that point, is that what are their options, so long as it's clear to the people, we still have a voice.
And Wayne's always, he always gives that little synopsis in the very beginning, he'll always be the moderator... He'll always be the moderator, for my moderator anyway, a couple more years.
Thank you.
But he always gives a synopsis in the beginning and he, I'm sure he could throw
Yeah, he does.
in there.
I can.
Just to alleviate any fears of the moderator overwhelming the vote.
Any other discussion? Which pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
And motion and second.
Oh, wait a minute, to support. I'm sorry, motion to support the motion.
Motion to support, that's correct. Thank you. And a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it, it's unanimous to support this article.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next article to be reviewed is article number 23, Discharges to the Municipal Storm Drain System. Now, is it, but I, is it, it's two, isn't there an expanded wetlands as part of this?
Well, there's, there are two different bylaws here. The second, article 24 actually is the wetlands bylaw and you'll be hearing that, I believe, on the 25th.
Okay, thank you.
So this is just a stormwater drainage system bylaw that we're being required to adopt. And we have Mr. Carter Faye here tonight from Environmental Partners, who's been doing our stormwater follow-up and, for the last couple of years, making sure that we're following through one of the requirements under our NIPD's permit. So I asked him to come here tonight to, you know, go over the bylaw with you and, you know, answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. Please introduce yourself again.
Yes, my name is Carter Faye with Environmental Partners Group, or Engineering for Environmental Partners. Mr. Chairman, the, the general bylaw is all part of the EPA's stormwater program for every town in Massachusetts. There are certain requirements that every town must do in order to allow the stormwater from their drainage system to enter the waters of the tunnel streams, wetlands of Massachusetts. So this, the gist of this general bylaw is to only allow stormwater to enter your stormwater drainage system. The intent is to keep your waters clean, so that we don't have sanitary sewers going, connections into your drainage system which then go into wetlands and streams and pollute the waters. Laundry discharge, floor drains from, from maintenance garages tied into your storm drain system which, again, goes out to your waters, which are polluted waters. That's the whole intent of this. So what this general bylaw is saying is, is that, is that, you know, we want, we wanna prevent illicit discharges going into your storm drain system. Under the general permits, what the town is required to do is sample your outfalls. That's one of the requirements in addition to the bylaw that the EPA requires that you have on the books. So in the course of sampling your outfalls, if you find something coming out that's non-stormwater, say it's deepurcoliform or what looks to be, you know, septic discharge, something coming from the laundry, discolorate water, it's the responsibility of the town to, you know, trace that flow upstream and figure out where this non-stormwater's coming from. This illicit discharge bylaw provides the town enforcement authority to go against people that are tied into the storm drain system and basically cut that flow right there. So we can, that's, in a nutshell, that's what this bylaw is doing, that's the intent of it. There are exemptions, you know, things other than stormwater get into the storm drain system. And there's a list of exemptions in this stormwater bylaw. Things related to foundation sumps, individual, individual vehicle washing, those are exempted under this bylaw. Any kind of fire flow testing from the, from the water system. And the list of exemptions is in there from the bylaw. So that's really the, the gist of it, relatively simple. Keep everything but the stormwater outside the drainage system and keep the, the water to the, of Middleborough clean.
Any board members have any questions?
Mr. Crowley? So you can't just pour anything you want down the storm drains?
That's the general gist of it, yes.
The guy who's painting the storm drain down the corner, not supposed to do that at all?
Absolutely.
All right. I knew that, I just know that a whole bunch of people don't know that.
I will mention
No, there's a guy down the corner from me.
Eighteen is coming.
About a five gallon bucket of paint down the storm drain. Drives us nuts.
Don't know.
I, I do wanna mention one other thing, and that is that it is a requirement of every town to have this bylaw on the books by EPA. So it is a permit requirement if the town doesn't at least go to town meeting to request this. They'd be in violation of the, the general permit.
And what does that, what are the consequences of being in violation?
Possible fine by EPA.
That's enough. Mr. McKinnon, do you have a comment?
Yes, yes, you know I would. This seems to be rather comprehensive. I mean, I've read through this twice and, well, almost three times and it's, it's, it's hard to follow and it, and I'm concerned that there might be some, say there's some contaminated, contamination in the soil. And because somebody does some construction, it alters the ground, the groundwater flow, the underground water flow, and causes that contamination to come out. As could possibly happen. Does the town then become liable for that?
I, I think that the situation that you are, let me, let me just back up to, the format of this bylaw is, is, was generated by a consortium of, of people, including the DEP. So the general format of this bylaw is very similar to what's being adopted by most of the towns in Massachusetts for meeting their EPA general permit. The descrip, the description of the, of the issue that you're talking about is contaminated groundwater from a person's property getting into a storm drain system. And groundwater itself, I could just refer real quick to the, the exemptions that are required. Rising groundwater, rising groundwater is, you know, is exempted underneath the
Rising groundwater is, but uncontaminated groundwater infiltration is in there. And now are they connected?
Well, what I, I guess what I would say to that is, is that if a property has groundwater such that it is contaminated and it is entering the town's drainage system, then that property owner, under the Massachusetts Contingency Plan, that property owner is responsible for what's leaving that property. They're responsible for the, the soils and the groundwater within their property. So they would be liable to the town for any damages that goes into, and in fact, if the town would have every right to go against the property owner, report the site to DEP for enforcement action under the Massachusetts Contingency Plan.
But the town is gonna have to be responsible for tracking it first?
Well, the town's responsibility is to, under the general permit, is to know what's coming out of its outfalls. If, if, in the course of, you know, DPW's maintenance of outfalls or finding discharges coming out that, that are discolorate, yes, they have a responsibility to, to track that upstream. So they, I mean, it is the town's storm drain system. The town is responsible for what goes, for knowing what's going in there or, or active, proactively figuring out if there's any illicit discharges going in there.
What about excessive fertilization that might wash into storm drain systems? Somebody does, puts too much fertilizer on their land or if there happens to be some type of pasture land near, near, near a storm drain that could get more fertilizer or contaminants, if you would, into the system? Do we, are we penalizing ourselves, our town, by accepting that bylaw? Or is there a out for that? Because this is a very, this is a rural area and we have a lot of, we have a lot of, what, 150 horse farms in this town. And they could be anywhere. Are we gonna run into a problem with that? And what's my, what, what, besides going after everybody with fines and threats? Is there any, is there anything we can do about that? Am I, are we, are we penalizing ourselves with this?
The, I, I guess what I, what I can say is that, you know, the, the town is responsible for the water quality within the surface waters of their town. Among the parameters that are tracked are phosphorus levels, deepurcoliform, suspended solids. You have distressed water bodies within the town. As you're tracking that upstream, if you're finding that, you know, a property is a, is a large contributor of deepurcoliform, what have you, going into that. You know, that if, it would be, he's causing water quality concerns and it's going, getting your, your, your storm drain system. So in my mind, that's an illicit discharge that's impacting the water quality that you have enforcement authority. Because what you're basically doing is you're, you're having unmitigated, uncontrolled storm drain, or he's causing discharge that's, that's damaging the water quality of the, of the town. The town would have the enforcement authority to go against that.
Well, I guess my concern with that is this farmer may have had that farm for 200 years, 300 years, who knows? And now we come in because EPA says to DEP, you've gotta do something. Now we're coming down on somebody who's had something he has since long before any of us were here. And, well, we're gonna shut him down?
Well, to, to EPA and DEP's point, there are, there are distressed water bodies within the town. If that farmer for years has been damaging the water quality of that, that surface water body to such a degree that it's, you know, that we can, that it, that it's distressed for that, under, for that parameter, there's no excuse for, for that to continue just because he's always been doing it.
I don't, I don't think farmers 300 years ago were using the type of nitrogen-rich fertilizers that they are today. And we absolutely have a moral obligation to make sure that our ponds and streams are clean. At least in my opinion, we do.
Well, I, I understand a moral obligation, but I, I get very nervous when the federal government dictates.
This is our town. This is us. We're the enforcement authority.
But I just get very concerned when edicts are passed down and we hit our, our fellow townspeople with more fines.
I don't have any problem going after somebody who's polluting the waterways. None whatsoever.
Does, does our bylaw have to be quite this comprehensive?
You know, as I said, it, it's sort of been blessed by, by DEP, we tweaked
Well, yeah, I mean, I could see they would.
What they're trying to meet was, they were, EPA had, had come down with a, a requirement that says, look, every town needs to have this, a local ordinance to prevent non-stormwater discharge from entering your system. And, and DEP with a number of towns, environmental agencies, watershed associations, basically came up with this template. This has been reviewed by Planning, Conservation, DPW, and Town Council.
All right, thank you.
I just have three questions. You mentioned several times that this is kind of a boilerplate bylaw that was designed by, just a blessing of the EPA and DEP. And several towns have adopted the format, which led me to believe that maybe we haven't adopted the exact same language. Are there changes in this bylaw that we're going to be asked to pass for the town of Middleborough versus other communities?
There are a few tweaks that we
Could you tell us what those tweaks are?
Sure. We've put the Board of Selectmen as the authorized enforcement agency. Some, some people, a lot of people are using the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board of the DPW for that. Some didn't want to exempt individual car washing or, or car washing for community events. Some did, were, the town of Middleborough's allowing that.
So, so we exempted that kind of activity?
We exempted, we exempted that.
Okay.
Some towns are more going over, in general, we accept, we didn't go any further over what DEP's boilerplate was. One of the, the issues that we talked about at length was the sump pumps that are directly tied to the, the storm drain system. Generally, those are gonna need to be registered with the town. So when the DPW comes out and does a, when they come and do catch basin cleanings and they're looking at, you know, standard catch basin, you're going to have, you know, catch basin grate, you're gonna have inflow and outflow pipe. Well, you know, what's this two-inch pipe that's coming in here? It'd be nice to know for the DPW which ones are registered, which ones. Basically, anything that doesn't look right, the town would like to know.
So are you saying that all residential subpumps that are tied directly into the stormwater system have to be registered? Is there gonna be a fee involved with that registration? What about subpumps that are not? Do they just run a hose out, they sell a window, it makes its way to the street and into the storm drainage system?
Those wouldn't be, those wouldn't be registered. Yeah, those are gone.
One other question for exempt activities. You said the drainage of swimming pools of de-coronated water. A lot of, and I'm assuming if that's if someone runs their, their pump hose out to the street and enters into the storm drainage system, that is exempt if it's de-coronated? What if it's coronated pool, which most people, you can't do it. You can't have a hose running to the street. What if you're just dumping that on your, to your own property? Can you do that?
Yes.
You can do that. So as long as you don't dump that water directly or indirectly into the stormwater system, you're okay?
Yes.
But if you do, it's a $300 fine? Is that the way this bylaw reads?
We're trying to encourage not, you know.
Okay, I, those are the questions I had. Thank you. Anybody, Ben, you have a question?
Just one. We have a pretty unique way of using water around here. Did you, have you gotten any feedback from outside sources like the Cranberry Grows Association or anything about that? How they might feel about this? Has there been any link to using all, all the fertilizer? And we talked about the allergy bloom, so has there been anything like that that could later on down the road try to have an adverse effect on the cranberry growing community? I mean, they, they do, I mean, they do bring the water in and out of these. They siphon off and they bring them back in. So it's just the only, well, it's
I'm wondering how much they're, they're really, I'm not a cranberry grower. I'm just wondering how much of what they're draining is actually going right into the storm drain system.
Not the storm drain, but into the, into the, the natural rivers and whatnot. Not the storm drain, but into the, into the, the natural rivers and whatnot. I mean, some of this testing is, is going to be into, from the storm drains into the rivers. Our concern is the river. I didn't know if this is somehow going to come back to go beyond the storm drainage and now into other forms, other, you know, you say you're going to follow it upstream, you know? They've never been tied to anything like that before. I know, I think a lot, most of the negative we hear about is more along the lines of like golf courses and whatnot.
Yes.
And, and I see it, you know, when I, I'm up, I like to fly around in my spare time, and you can see it up there, just this green glowing gok that just always surrounds these huge golf courses, which we don't have any of. But we certainly have other bodies of water that we use for agriculture. I just didn't know if this was in some way going to have any effect on that.
I don't, I don't, this bylaw per se, I don't know.
Good, okay.
Anyone in the audience have any comments on this bylaw? Run it up.
John Walton, 84 Port Street. I'm just wondering about the cost involved. It sounds like a lot of testing, a lot of different locations. How frequent would that testing be? What would be the cost if you have to backtrack and find a source? And is that all the town paying, or is this coming from the state?
I don't know if you have an estimate of what it costs us to trace back a possible polluting source. Andy, do you have an estimate?
Uh-
Want to talk to the podium, so everybody can hear you. Thank you.
We've looked at some long-range budgeting, and probably it's going to probably, definitely have cost us money, to develop, we saw more than, we're looking at, we're looking at, it's all $50,000, and it will probably continue, maybe not that much each year, but it will be expensive. It's hard to say, but I would guess-
So, it's a $50,000 number to establish the plan, and then maybe much as 50 grand a year to maintain it, which would be tracing back violation.
What the other reason to say $50,000?
I mean, I mean, the real answer is, we really don't know, but we've got, you've heard the estimates.
Andy? Before you run off? May I? Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go right ahead, Mr. McKinnon.
So, let's go to the little land of make-believe, where we just opened up this grate, we want to clean out the little storm drain, and we see the two-inch pipe. How do we track that? How do we, how do we now play detective with this pipe and figure out where it's coming from?
It's from my experience, you look at the direction it's pointed, and usually it's-
And that's it? Guilty as charged.
It's pointed at the building.
Yep. Don't, you don't have to snake these or anything? You don't have to snake it? Run it up.
Uh, generally, uh-
No, just, just-
The pipe connected to a storm drain, uh, it's coming from a pollution source, so we usually point that pipe.
Well, then, suppose somebody did something really bizarre and put a pipe in the middle of the run, somehow managed to get a pipe into the middle of your run between your storm drain.
I don't know.
So, are you going to be scoping these drains, too? Are we going to have to go through that kind of an exit? Because I'm, I'm just afraid where they say, "Have you checked your drains? Do you really know?"
Some put a pipe in the middle of a pipe or something, and they have to give the roll up and-
Well, well, if, if there's some type of an infiltration in there, then we're going to have to find it.
Infiltration?
Yeah, if there's a, some way, somebody's getting, I mean, there are, people do strange things in this world. And this sounds bizarre, but suppose you open up that drain and you find something in there? You find some oil or something. Now you've got to start, what, scoping pipes? And how much does that cost when you want to scope pipes?
I don't, I can also, I don't know, but if, if there's more possibility of that happening, yes, we would like to trace it back. If we, if we detect a leak and a leak, yes, we would like to trace it back. It could be possible, yes.
Okay. That's the point I wanted to get to.
I have a very inexpensive way to find the owner of any drain. If you plug it up and back it up, the owner of that sump pump will come. It's very simple.
Can I just ask a follow-up question?
Why use the Selectmen?
Do we have any choice in the matter of tracing back if we're aware of a pollutant going into a stream or a river? Do we have a choice now, under the law passed by EPA and DEP?
No, in fact, there, there are deadlines, there, um, the, the, um, as the draft permits written, um, you know, you have 60 days to, to make substantial investigative. And you can do it, you know, if you have a suspected house, there's dye testing, there's smoke testing, obviously access to, to live at home.
And, and the next question's going to be stupid, but that's okay. You're only required to do this if you have a storm drainage system?
Yes.
So, we could eliminate the storm drainage system, and we wouldn't have to do that.
There you go. I'm all up for that.
Do you want to propose that?
Yep.
Okay, then.
Lock him up.
Yes. Good evening. Welcome back.
Response to Kurt Marion Road. I've listened to you gentlemen for a few years now. One wise thing that you have said, that I'm really all for, you said, "You said..."
That can't be right.
No, it's got to be wrong.
He did say. Um, how are we going to recoup that money from the federal government now that they're instituting another law on the towns? Did I misquote you?
No, that's good enough.
Okay, close. Not a quote.
They're not actually, we're not even going to get any money back, so I can answer that question right now. The hand comes down, gives you the edict, walks away, and you pick up the tab. You pick up the tab.
Exactly.
You don't. Yet. All the taxpayers will pick up the tab. And if we start snaking that pipe and it costs $50,000, well, okay. If it costs $60,000, then they'll go to Charlie and say, "Charlie, we need another $60,000."
I have no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. When I was reading through this bylaw draft, it seems as though if we find a, what we'll call the smoking gun, somebody who's illegally connected, doing something wrong, any of the investigation, any of the costs associated with that is going to be borne onto whoever's doing that. I think that the bylaw says that we can try and recoup that, because it's a civil penalty. It could go to criminal if it was really bad, but it's a civil penalty, aside from the $200 a day. But we would be able to recoup if we had to go looking for that smoking gun, and we found that smoking gun. But I saw that, I was, I was happy to see that we could actually recoup something. Thank you.
Could you lean the property? Can you lean the property?
Um, not really.
It's coming out of a property. I mean, we've leaned them before for other things.
I guess I'd have to go back to the-
I think it's the enforcement agency, we should be able to.
It doesn't specifically say, uh, it's something to find.
Find, it's not, okay. Find, it's not paid. I mean, that's if it goes criminal, but-
Which it can.
But we can find. It doesn't have to go criminal. Town can find them, so I assume if we can find them, we can lean them.
Yeah, I, I would assume so.
Okay.
Yeah, it says right here, the, the board or its duly authorized agent is an authorized officer to impose such fines.
Okay. We'll just assume that comes with, all right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion and a second.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
Three to one in favor of supporting this, this article. Thank you. Article 29, acquisition of land off of Cross Street, Ray Cross Street well. So, we're acquiring land for potential well street, uh, well site?
Correct, Mr. Chairman. Up here, I've given you a couple of graphics to explain these articles. The, the first one is on top. This is the Cross Street well site that we've been pursuing for many, many years. We're coming, I believe, to an end with this, and in doing the title research, we realized that, uh, we've, we've already gotten, um, the appropriation and the authority to go forward with this at a previous town meeting, but we realized in the title research that one of the properties was actually owned by a different, um, party. I think it was two parties who owned it, and we only named one, so we, we needed to reauthorize the acquisition of this, uh, well site. So, you can see, it's, it's largely in, you know, this circle here with a little extra piece, uh, down here that we'll be acquiring. Uh, this is, um, this is Cross Street up here, and this is the, uh, the train line right here. So-
So, this is a new well site, or was there a well site?
This is, this is a, a new well site, uh, and we've been looking to, uh, it's got a, however, it's got a number of property owners, and we've been trying to work out the details with them, and, and we're getting close to having, uh, having agreements done with all of them. Uh, so, this is just to, you know, to clean up the prior authorization of town meeting to go forward with this, and I think we did this, um, you know, we've actually, we've done it a number of times, most recently, I think, last year, to, um, you know, to get the authority to acquire these various parcels here on the-
We've done a number of investigations on the sites, and we have a high expectation of-
Yes, and we're, and we're getting, you know, we're moving forward with testing to make sure that, you know, the DEP will approve the site before we, you know, make the final deals with all the property owners.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McKinnon?
How close is the train line to the well site?
Um, right here.
Yeah, it's right there. It's pretty close on that map.
Yeah, although it's, um-
Is it an active rail line?
Yeah. That's, uh, the, the zone one, the entire protected area.
How far across is that entire production area? That's, that, how big is that, so, yeah, I mean-
It's 800 foot diameter, 400 foot radius, circle.
800 foot diameter?
Yeah.
So, you're about nine, if you put the well in the center, you're about 500 feet from the railroad tracks.
And that's what's required by DEP to give you the sufficient clear around your, clearance around your wellhead to provide ample protection from, you know?
A 10,000 gallon tanker car leaking out there.
Well, I mean, if that were to happen, obviously, you know?
You'd like to know.
Yeah, I would say. But that's a, that's an active rail line that's got a lot of freight going down it,
I guess it means the minimum requirements requirement, correct?
Mr. Chairman?
Missed up a few.
Just, just to address, I'm not the engineer on this at all, but I will say it's one of my four tastes. The zone one requirement, which is that zone protection is a 400 foot radius, which this actually will encompass, but the rail line is close, it is a concern, and it's something that gets identified during the, they call it SWAP, the Source Water Assessment. They actually look at that, and they, they make sure that towns are aware of it. An incident could occur anywhere. Someone could be delivering oil down on Spruce Street, or at the Rock Wells. I mean, anywhere you go in town, there could be an incident. That, the Rock Wells are extremely close to another location that is potential-
Well, my concern, again, is I've, I've seen, you've seen the railroad, rail yards, you go in the rail, drive by the railroad, rail yards, and you see the tank cars down there. If something happens, it's unlikely, but derailments do happen, bad things happen, and if something happens, we've spilled, they spilled 10,000 gallons of whatever kind of substance they might have, whether it be diesel, jet fuel, gasoline, kerosene, whatever.
You'd, you'd take it offline? You, you know, you would just stop using that?
You eliminate, yeah, but you invested all that money into something that you're, it's, it's more, it's more likely you're going to have an incident near a set of train tracks.
Your contingency plan would be in that case, would be to build a treatment plant at the cost of what was spilled. So, if a train, you have a derailment, you have a spill there, they would actually build a treatment plant at that location, and treat and remove all that carcinogen or whatever spilled out. It would actually, it would be borne on the insurance carrier of the WR car owner. That's what we do, you'd have to go back to them. You take it offline until you build such, I've built fuel plants in my time. The WR Grace one is the other, which we've all heard about, and there's been a movie about it, uh, the highway, so. It is a, it's still, there aren't a lot of pieces of property here, I say, in Middleborough that are, have the water available to us, close to our distribution system without having to put in $3 million worth of water, and get it to us. So, that's kind of one of the issues that we've always looked at, is we have ample water in remote areas, you have to take the water into our distribution system. This is right up there. In fact, we have a well diagonally across the street right now as well, the Cross Street One well is located over there as well, but it's, uh, a little bit further to the west of the tracks, but it is over there.
So, we have, we're going to have two wells drawing out of the same aquifer?
Uh, we have a lot of wells drawing out of the same aquifer. In fact, all but two draw out of the Taunton River Basin, uh, the micro aquifers. We have, we have East Main Street wells, side by side with them. I've reviewed each other, just looking wells, one, two, or 600 feet apart. So, we've got our wells, some of the Rock Wells, as well, pair them side by side. And we've done the investigative work, I see, we, the town and I myself, have done the investigatory work that shows that there's ample water that is worth pursuing, or we would be pursuing. We've looked at other places and not pursued them. Yeah, this is a bylaw location.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience want to speak to this?
Yeah, the questions I was going to ask were too much for the 29th year period. I am guilty of not having read the, uh, the article here, so. The first question is, uh, how much, 29, you know, these lots, Cross Street and-
How much to bring the well up to running, or how much to acquire the site?
To acquire the property. It may have probably, if this had been voted, included prior to a meeting, probably we'd discuss then, but I'd just like to bring that question up, how much are we paying for this? The second question is, how are we paying for it? How is it funded? Probably from the, uh, what?
Probably from the water enterprise line. That's how we're funding the water enterprise line.
Right.
So, it's your water rates will fund it.
That's right. So, I just wanted to, those, these questions go for 29th year, so how much?
How much it's going to be, I'm not sure. Charlie, do you have an estimate of what it's going to cost?
It's, it's, it's under a half a million dollars in an acquisition in total.
For the two of them?
For this one.
A half a million dollars for Cross Street property?
For all the, the properties here. We have an easement, we have several different parcels in here.
Half a million dollars, okay. And I'm going to be asking the same question for the, the next one down below. How much? The, the other question I have is, uh, is on the deed, the town owner deeds the property, would be restricted use on the property?
Yeah, it's, uh, only for water, you know, water resource purposes.
And that would be right on the deed, that it can only be used for, for a while, the town can't change their mind later on, if the town's going to be owner of this land, and say, "Hey, I want to put a DPW inside there."
Yeah, no, this is purely for, no, this is purely for water, it's nothing else.
I just want to make sure it gets on the deed, so the town doesn't change their mind, like they have done in other properties. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one last question. We already want to finish.
I said, "Thank you." What? That, that really meant, sit down, Mike.
We'll, we'll discuss that next. We haven't gotten to that.
That's the next one.
Great. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second?
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? The generous. We're going to support this article. Article number 30, acquisition of land off Plymouth Street, Ray the Mazaris well.
Correct. So, here's Plymouth Street over here, um, we have an easement coming across here, and actually, this is the Taunton River here, and this is Bridgewater up here. Again, yeah, we've owned this area for quite some time, but, uh, as we got further into the development, we realized that it would be more productive if we were able to move the, um, the wellhead more to, into this area right here, which meant that we needed to acquire some additional land to give us the, the radius that we needed for the wellhead protection, uh, district. So, um, we've contacted the property owners here, the Burt Erle family, and they're agreeable to selling us the, the area that we need to, to make this a more productive well site. Um, and we're, you know, talking about around $100,000 for about four point, some odd acres to do that. Again, water development charges, we'll, we'll pay for that. Uh, and this is a, um, you know, again, this is a, you know, site that we, you know, is, is a little further along, we've done more testing here than we have up here, but it's a very, it's a very good site, uh, and it will help us, you know- it will help us, you know, when we get it online, balance some of our, our problems with, you know, iron and manganese that, that give us, you know, give us trouble in some parts of town. So, you know, give us a better, you know, better, clearer water source to add to our distribution system.
Okay. And I probably should have mentioned this when we were talking about the other article. Both of these sites are part of the, the long-term development plan for our water distribution system.
Exactly.
One of the, so these are, these are two projects that were part of the long-term strategy to improve and maintain our water distribution plan. So in order to stick with that strategy, you need to continue to move along those, those milestones that we set off, and this is the next one.
Correct.
Any comments from the board? See, anybody from the audience? We answered your questions, right? Right? Okay. Anyone else? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to, motion to support.
Have a motion.
Article 30. Sorry.
Have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Ayes have it. unanimous, we'll be supporting this article as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. With that, that will conclude our open session of this evening's meeting. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of contract negotiation, non-union personnel, water selectmen, secretary. Discussing these matters in open session would be detrimental to the negotiations.
So, move.
We have a motion and a second? Second.